Order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, everybody. Think it's, I read it as the coldest May first in the last 115 years. I don't know if that's true or not, but.
I can do it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Boring.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Arty Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Chris O'Regan here. Sidney Valentine.
Absent excuse, she's setting up for the elections, so. First of all, I'd like to amend the agenda. We have to set a public hearing. This would be under new business J. To set a public hearing for the drinking water state revolving fund. And then, under K, obtain quotes for fire department consultants. Yes, like what we talked about at our budget meeting. So that's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, support. All in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I have another question on the agenda.
Yeah.
We're gonna amend it. PCE engineering for San Souci and PCE carbon credit study.
Yeah.
What can't we put those together? Shouldn't we split apart?
Um.
Talk about them all at once?
Well, they're two different things, but. We can, uh. I mean, they're two different items, I don't. I get what you're saying.
I was just requesting on putting the two PCE engineering studies together on the agenda.
Yeah. I get.
They're different things, but yeah, either way, support.
Okay, so we're gonna move project control engineering for San Souci down to, from 1C, down to. Below the planning amendment. Okay. Draw an arrow. That works.
So that was Mark and Maureen?
Yeah. All right, got that. First thing, we have a public hearing. Was that?
Do we have to vote on it? We have to vote on it. Right, we, I mean, he had the money.
Do we vote on it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry.
I'd also like to make an amendment to the agenda, too. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda, include honoring a citizen's request that her letter be read out loud during public comments. And I'm, I will volunteer to go to the podium for that. That's the letter that's already on the agenda. I ask correspondence to make that motion.
It's under the consent agenda right now.
Which is just to file it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'm making a motion that we read it out loud per her request.
Support. Okay, have motion and support? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Two. Did you vote? Three? Okay, failed. All right, public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing for Clean Water State Revolving Fund Plan.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the drinking water state revolving fund project plan, May 15th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Whoa, whoa. May 1st.
Yes.
At 6:06.
6:06.
Sorry, Mark, I had to get that right.
Okay, you got support? Okay, uh, all, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So I'll open up public hearing for, and this is, um, for our Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project Plan, right? Anthony, come on up, Anthony. And, uh, basically, so we can get very low interest loans if we need it for our sewer project.
That's correct. So, um, this kind of goes on the back of two previous studies. One that was conducted by OHM on our sewer interceptor, which runs through the township from Ira Township all the way down to the wastewater treatment plant. And, um, the culmination of our, all our findings during the SAW grant. So what you have in front of you is the colored maps indicating the, um, the areas of the sewer system, both the interceptor and our own township collection system, that were rated as five and four, which five being the worst condition. And four being, you know, these are structural codes from NASCO, uh, which we use for our pipeline inspection. And so the state, um, provides two methods of determining, uh, the need for rehabilitation. One is through structural evaluation, and that's where the five and four comes in. Five, four, three, two, one. And then, the second way would be through an INI study, which is a little bit more in-depth. We were able to, to, you know, address the major issues, um, that we found in our inspections during the SAW grant by using the structural, uh, method. So that's what generated which areas of the collection system that we're gonna, we're gonna address in this proposed state revolving fund. So, our selected, um, project alternative, because they, they make you look at the different cost alternatives of doing nothing, or, or doing trenchless rehabilitation, or doing the open cut, uh, which is the most expensive and intrusive. And so, our selected alternative is to do trenchless rehabilitation, which has very minimal impact, um, both to the community, because, you know, nothing is really being excavated. In fact, in this case, it's all trenchless lining. So, so that amounted to lining of the existing sewer system. There's 11,756 linear feet of existing sewer system that will get non-woven felt fabric using the cast-in-place liner method. There's some point repairs, there's 320 linear feet, 64 points each, um, that have issues that can be addressed without doing a full lining. And then we're lining laterals, 336 of them, where during inspection, when we inspect the lateral connection, we found, uh, damage directly at that location, which if we were to just line it, all the infiltration would just migrate to that reinstated tap and enter our collection system. So, um, those are called, uh, short Ts or T-liners. And the T-liner, um, just stays, it goes five feet off from the main and kind of secures that connection between the main and the, and the service to the person's house. So, we have 336 of those. And then, um, uh, obviously, um, the contractors that are selected would need to do their own cleaning and videoing prior to and after, um, the rehabilitation and provide that to us. So, um, that's our system. And then in the lining of the existing interceptor pipe, uh, this was the inspection that was done, I think, by Red Zone out of Philadelphia. They, um, determined that 9,590 linear feet of existing interceptor pipe, um, was damaged primarily by hydrogen sulfide attack. That's created during a low oxygen environment, because we have a major force man that runs from Ira and dumps out right about where the, where Blue Bill is, basically. Blue Bill comes into M29. And so, right there is where you have high hydrogen sulfide in the sewer system. So from there to basically Pearl Beach, or just after Pearl Beach Pump Station, um, we had a lot of, a lot of, the pipe was completely eaten around. And you were, you had exposed rebar, et cetera. So, um, that's a special polymer resin lining, SIPP method, uh, which has to be done, because that's a concrete pipe with, with that exposed rebar. So, that reinstates it and provides that lifetime back to the, um, to the interceptor sewer. Additional to that, there were 470 point repairs in the interceptor pipe. And then the lateral lining, um, there is 100 taps that are connected to the interceptor directly that required the same system of lining lateral. Then, uh, 55 manholes along the interceptor were found to have, um, the need for lining and adjustments, they're either too low, but primarily too low. And then that's it, just the, uh, post and, uh, pre-cleaning and televising, um, of those rehabs. So, that's the, pretty much the entire scope of that, um, uh, state revolving fund, um, project plan. The project map is what you have in front of you, the controlling factors. Obviously, we, we used our Waterworth cash model for, for the, to determine the borrowing scenario, um, the term in which we, we selected, it was a 30-year loan. And then, um, to determine if rates are carrying that and that, and they had. So there's no necessity to increase rates, it's built into the rates into our capital improvement plan. We're just, um, instead of how we had it spread out over many, many years, we're able to take, take advantage of the costs today and save the township quite a bit of money in trying to do that over many years. There was, because it's a trenchless solution, there was no impact to the wetlands or floodplains, or any, uh, of the, uh, wildlife in our study area. There's no earth disturbance, and no new facilities are being, um, proposed. Schedule, so, if everything goes according to the SRF, uh, milestone schedule, um, we have our project design, which would happen October of this year till April of 2024. Then we'll advertise for bid in June of 2024, do the bid opening July of 2024, and then start construction in September of next year with, uh, substantial completion. Two years following that will provide, will allow the contractors two years to do the work, um, with the final completion October 2026. That's the, that's worked out well in the past, when we've allowed the contractors that timeframe, we've gotten really good pricing. But, from our experience, we've noticed that they pretty much take advantage of it in the first year and complete the work, so, um, I don't anticipate.
Right, so this will be actually in our next fiscal year.
Mm-hmm, correct. Now, you paid, you paid interest for two years, uh, before the end of the construction, so.
Right.
As it pertains to your budget, you have a budgeted interest that you're paying each of those years that construction's happening, and then it converts into, whatever the final construction cost is, converts into the loan, which carries on for the remaining 28 years as a loan payment. We have here the estimated loan payment. It's 260,000 roughly per year. And that includes the interest associated with it, 2% interest. 2.2% interest. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. The lining of our system, um, was about 2.6 million. The lining of the interceptor was 2.7 million. And then, um, the total estimate, the total cost of the project was 5.9. And we have, we, we have a million dollars, um, that we got in congressional earmark money that's a grant, so that'll, that'll, that'll reduce the, the cost associated with it. I believe we got that from Senator Gary Peters's office. And I put the press release in the, um, in the project plan. The interceptor is shared with Ira, so Ira also has a liability.
A share of that.
Yep, a liability with, as it pertains to the interceptor.
Can I just ask a quick question? You said.
Sure.
2.6 million and then 2.7 million for the interceptor.
Mm-hmm.
That's 5.3 million, but you're saying 5.9 million, so what's the other?
Uh, yeah, Engineering Contract Administration Inspection, um, that added up to make the 5.9. Yeah, 5.97.
But the 2.7 is split with Ira.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's, we calculate the total, and then a million comes off the entire thing, and then, um, Ira has roughly a million, I think, in their.
Yep.
Responsibility, so. I already spoke about the user costs and how our rates are not, not being impacted. Cost of the loan.
I got a question, Anthony.
And that's it, basically?
You don't have to give me an answer. But I noticed on all the streets we're doing, pretty much down by, um, Park Lane and Aqua Isles, you know, the Sassy subdivision, and most of the bird lanes, there's very little, you know, a few spots, and kind of, just two spots on Colony and, and so forth. But St. John's Drive, that whole street is.
Yep.
What do you think would have caused that?
It's older.
What's that?
I think it's older.
Is it older?
Yep. And, uh, so is Anchor Bay Drive, pretty much all that.
I see that.
The other aspect is, is that, um, when we see the, one of the things that increases the, the structural code, um, is when, is when we see all the stalactites and whatnot, so that's a higher infiltration happening in our sewer system along St. Clair, uh, St. John's and Anchor Bay Drive. Which is pretty, pretty obvious, because it's probably getting inundated, especially Anchor Bay Drive, um, would get inundated in the right, you know, conditions of wind. And so, then you'll see that, it'll, it'll be much more apparent, um, as an infiltration into the sewer system. And that's kind of a big part of, um, of doing this, is that, um, you know, that water that enters the sewer system, it, we're, we're paying, um, the, the shared treatment plant to treat that, uh, they're, they're metering that, and, uh, and it's not, it's just coming from outside, it's not coming from any of the users, so. The tighter, yeah, the tighter we keep our system, um, the lower we can keep costs for everyone, so.
Better capacity, too.
Actually, yeah, as well. That'll, that'll reduce our liability to have to do, um, investments in our treatment plant. So, yeah, we, the useful life of CIPP and SIPP lining is over 50 years. The system hasn't had anything done in that amount of time, so it's pretty much, so, so we're basically giving it a whole new life from what its original lifetime was. Other than that, I think that's pretty much our project plan description. I know we need to cover, whoops. You have a, the resolution, I believe.
Yes.
The draft resolution. So, between the agenda and the sign-in sheet, uh, we just need to have the resolution and, assigned submittal form, and then I'll take any notes on anybody's questions.
Okay. Anybody having questions for Anthony while he's still there? We're gonna be talking to him a lot. What was that?
I do believe that the, the area is on Colony, we have to re-camera that, because that's where we just done.
The manholes.
No, this is where we just done the repairs.
Oh, yeah. Where the dips were.
Yes.
Yeah.
That and towards the end where it was, where it was, uh, ordered.
Right. Just past the, the first turn.
Yes, first turn, and then we'll do one dollar at the end.
Yeah, we can do that, right?
Yeah, so the contractor will be doing a pre.
He's got a camera at all anyhow.
It's included in his bid, yeah. They all, they all mandate that, that they do it, because they, they're gonna go in with expensive equipment to do the CIPP lining. So, uh, as their, as a part of their job, they go into those sections that we told them to go to, and, um, you know, they're gonna see the, the changing conditions and adjust accordingly, and we'll adjust their contract.
Thanks, Lance. Does anybody have any questions or public, is public comments for the sewer project?
Hey, Anthony?
Yes.
In relation to the sanitary sewer interceptor project, and the timing is such, looks like you're gonna give the contractor up to two years. So we may also be looking into a drinking water, uh, situation where we need to either update and/or replace lines. So, do you anticipate these projects taking place at the same time? And if so, logistically, is that gonna create a lot of construction, a lot of headache at the same time, or what's your, what's your thought process on that?
Yeah, I mean, I have a similar situation happening in, uh, East China, and because it's trenchless, um, the sewer rehab doesn't really interfere with the water. I mean, we have a 10-foot-plus standoff anyways between those two utilities required, so.
Okay.
Um, the drinking water rehab's much more intensive. I mean, you're dealing with directional drilling and open, opening for connecting each service back, and so that's, that's way, way, um, more, I guess, impactful than, than trenchless rehab, which just goes from manhole to manhole. It isn't even really, um, um, impact the landscape or, or anything. So, they're usually out of each other's hair, um, and we would put that into the contracts that those, that, you know, beware that there's this other project happening at the same time, and we need to be cognizant of the schedules. And they're required, when they provide their contract book back to us with their bonds and insurance, they're required to submit a schedule. And so that allows us in the pre-con meetings to have coordinated schedules between our projects. Because there's, the sewer is totally separate from the water, it's only if you have multiple projects in water where you're shutting off, potentially shutting off different parts of the system, that you need to be careful, because we need to maintain service non-stop till residents, so. But, yeah, I don't see any major problems with, uh, with those happening at the same time.
Fantastic. And will they provide you, like, Gantt charts and stuff?
They will.
Along with their bids?
Yep, well, they, they're required to provide those, uh, charts when they bring their contract book signed.
Okay.
Back to us, yeah.
You said 2.7 million is gonna be split with Ira, but then you said about a million with Ira. So is, it's not split equally, and is part of that because it was their hydrogen, what do you call it?
No, um, it's, I think, 2.7, so, I mean, it was, there's, engineering is pulled out from that, so they're gonna pay a share of, of the engineering, design, inspection costs as well. So that rounded to roughly, uh, 3 million, when you included those parts. Because it's about 50/50 between our collection system and the interceptor.
Their share is about half.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the 600,000 is a half of that, and also half of the 2.7 million?
Yeah, so, so they're only liable for, uh, basically, um, a half of what's left over after the million-dollar grant from Gary Peters's office is applied.
Right.
So that's 2.7 minus the one, that's 1.7, divide that by two, and then half of the engineering costs and inspection costs associated with each.
And we got the grant for the sewer interceptor.
It gets really close to.
So we can't put it toward the whole project, because the 2.6 million?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, now I understand.
Million dollars for the sewer interceptor.
All right, just trying to.
No, that's fine.
Put that together, okay?
Yeah. It's a little weird how they apply the grant, uh, money.
Okay.
Any questions or anything with our, uh, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project Plan? Once, twice? Any other questions for Anthony? We'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Board, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Drinking Water State Revolving Fund at 6:24 PM, May 1st.
We have support?
Support.
Okay, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Bill's payable. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to support and approve Bill's payable in the amount of
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? I'll do a roll call. You want me to do it? You wanna do it? It doesn't matter.
Uh, go right ahead.
Okay. John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Arty, yes. Kristi?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we have our supervisors' report. I've been doing a lot of work on budgets, which is that time of year, it's all good. Met with, uh, the new director of County Parks, of the County Parks and Rec. And they have budgeted, they, they actually received a, a grant for, uh, $271,000, it's a 50% matching grant, um, for development on the, the park here in across from Kroger, Catch 22. So right now, they have budgeted $542,000 for the development of, of the beach park. They also applied for a $125,000 passport grant and a $300,000 trust fund grant. And when, right now, the status is, you know, they're, they finished the engineering, and they're trying to get the permits, or, or they're waiting on Eagle for permits, and they're, they're doing back and forth with that. So really, until, I, I'm estimating, you won't see any construction until next year, maybe next fall, um, by the time they get all this money from grants and, and, uh, you know, for the bidding and everything. What you might see is, I know that we're talking about tearing down the two houses that are there, so. And we're fin, uh, finalizing the agreements on the new municipal utility authority. I'm not used to, that's the old CIA, I wanted to call it the Clay-Ira Elginak Authority for CIA, I thought that was cooler, but that's what it's, it's called. I have met and, uh, and our meeting with all our unions for negotiations, and we got some meetings coming up in the next two weeks. And so far, all the, all the talks are going pretty well, pretty good. Isn't that right, Paul? That's right, that's what you hear. Okay, um. And let's see, we had a preliminary meeting with Ira Township on renewing their police contract, um, which they definitely wanna do. And been doing a lot of work on, they call onboarding the Spark Grant, uh, that we got for, uh, the park for playground equipment. Met with some, uh, equipment suppliers, um, and I am reapplying, uh, for round two for the outdoor exercise equipment. We split it up into two ass, uh, in fact, they just opened that, the second round up for that today. And I, I do have, I, I've also put in for a DNR trust fund grant for that, and in fact, I gotta, I owe them some information on that also. But, um, we're, um, hopeful to, um, take the old playscapes out and, and repurpose them on Brown's Field on the island. Traveled to Naples, New York to visit, uh, LG Wastewater Treatment Plant, uh, that could be a solution for our San Souci area. It was a very good trip. We looked at how they funded it, uh, all the processes and costs of operations, and, what, what we wanna do, actually, I, I, I just have it penciled in, I can't say we're doing it just yet, um, there's a plant in La Porte, Indiana. It's smaller, similar, it, uh, it's, it's, work is for a, a school and one for a park there. They're smaller, aren't they, Anthony, than what we'd be doing?
They're, the La Porte, Indiana one is, is very similar.
Very similar. Anyhow, I wanted to do a bus trip there and do a tour of it, uh, and looking at May 17th. So if anybody on our board, or, uh, any stakeholders in San Souci area, or the home, or anybody that wants to go, get ahold of me. We'll leave, you know, in the morning, seven in the morning, we'll be back at night. We'll drive out there and do about a two, two, two and a half hour tour. I'll have the engineers there, and you can see how the process works, and, and they'll explain it all, and, um, I was very impressed from what I saw out in New York. And, uh, I, I couldn't find anybody, I even talked to, to the lady who, who fought it the most for it, and she really didn't have too much, uh, negative things to say about it, so. For what we've seen so far, I, I think it's, uh, it would, it would be a good solution for the San Souci area, and. area and improve the quality of life there. So, but May 17th, I'll blast it out once it's confirmed, and if anyone would like to go for a road trip and check it out, you'd be more than welcome. Working on a lot of light issues with the code enforcer, the Pearl Beach bathrooms and parking lot, and also the pickleball courts have gone out for bid, and we'll be opening those bids May 8th. That's a week from today. Spent a couple hours with the state marshal, fire marshal, and he, it was very interesting talking to him. But, you know, the big thing is retention of and recruiting of fire personnel, it's a national issue. And hopefully, we can come up with something where we can make things easier for firefighters that have our backs. We want their backs. So, let's see. Oh, for having issues with the broadband maps and expanding broadband to where it's not being serviced, we have about three miles in Clay. And I went on the maps, and they actually show that the area is being serviced by Comcast, and it's not. And I tried to go through the appeal process on the website, and I didn't get very far. I actually met with the head connect, they call them, the head connectivity officer of the state of Michigan, is in charge of all of this. And I just emailed him the addresses that are not served or underserved, and he's supposed to take care of that for me, so I'll be bird dogging that as we go. Hey, we received, the township, free trees to give away to people from Cargo Hill, the salt company. We have 200 of each. We have red oak, white oak, bur oak, and shag bark hickory. And I thought what we could do is give them away during Clay Days, and if we have extra, we can give them away at our, the following week at our cleanups. So, if anybody, they're about, I don't know, this tall, Lance?
Yeah. They got shoots on them about that tall.
Yeah. They're shooting their button right now, so they're good trees. Lance's office is being overtaken, so this will be a yearly thing, actually. So, we were able to take advantage of it a little bit last year, and we're on it this year. So, anybody want any good hardwood trees, let us know.
What are the Clay Days dates again?
Yes. What?
The dates on Clay Days?
I'll get to that here in a second.
Oh, okay.
Spring cleanup is May 20th and 21st on Harson's Island, the extra day, 8 to 4. And then on the island, that, May 20th, that night, we're going to do the block party, starting at 5 o'clock, the San Souci Dancing in the Street Block Party. I had a thought, I don't know if anybody can help me out, help us out. Thought about contacting, it's a little late, but contacting Salvation Army and see if I can get a truck. And if anybody would like to donate furniture or stuff for the Salvation Army, they could bring it, and we could collect, you know, collect it there, too. I don't know. Anybody have an in on Salvation Army? Let me know. Shoot it to me. Just always trying to think of ways of stepping it up, you know?
Sure.
All right. Been working on music in the park and Clay Days. And Clay Days is May 13th. We're having the powwow and all the vendors. Last year, I think we had about 30 vendors, and they're saying we're going to have more this year. Miss America 10 is going to be here. We have a quilting show, and there's a traveling underground railroad quilt show that's going to be included with all the other quilts from the area that will be here. And they are actually kicking off, I don't know if you saw these quilt blocks around the quilt block trail, St. Clair County Trail, that starts in Clay Township, and it's going to go up to Port Huron. And they're putting, they're like four by four, or I think it's up to eight foot by eight foot, and they're quilt blocks.
Wood.
Huh?
They're wood, right?
Yeah. They're actually metal, and, you know, they're kind of depicting the history and everything, and it's really cool. They're going to have a website, and if you take your phone and a little QR code, it will tell you all the history that, of that area, and explain the quilt blocks. Like, you know, I know we're having one at, the DDA paid for, St. John's Marsh Colony Tower, Pearl Beach Pier, one here for the log cabin, and one at the Harson's Island ferry entrance for the island. And, okay, let's see, well, that's part of Clay Days, we're going to have the log cabin open, and all the storyboards will be out. The pictures will be displayed, or the windows, is what these windows saw through, you know, the past 100 years. My sweetie's work.
What are the hours of Clay Days?
They're gonna, well, the Indians, the vendors are going to start setting up at 10:00 AM, and the powwow, the dancing starts at noon, and it usually goes to about 4:00, 4:30. Okay. Any questions? All right. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Fred, Mike?
My name is Alice Shaborsky at 773 North Channel Drive. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Donna Holakoglu, 898 North Channel Drive. She emailed the board a letter requesting it to be read as she is unable to attend. She asked me to read her letter during public comments if no board members read it. Okay. Here's the letter. "I would like this letter to be read out loud at public comments at the township meeting May 1st, 2023. I am unable to attend. I am extremely disappointed at the open discussion regarding appointing a replacement trustee position for Joanne Shirkey at the last meeting on April 17th, 2023. It was my interpretation that Mr. John DeBoyer was appointed as a township trustee because of his knowledge of township upcoming changes to our water system. This is a system that has bandaged, been bandaged, would need it neglect for the last 20-plus years under his supervision. The Board of Trustees are meant to represent citizens, not the system. Maureen Bowie commented on replacing the open position left for an island, left from an islander with an islander made plenty of diplomatic sense. From my understanding, there now sits only one person out of seven from the island on the township board. It is a fact that a very large percentage of the island taxpayers are non-residents and non-voters with no voting voice and now no representation. A decision made and approval by all of you except for one no vote. When the next election is here, it is a reoccurring fact that the incumbent trustee or chairperson has a huge advantage over a new person interested in the same position. In fact, there are a few of you sitting on your position right now because you were originally handed, hand-selected by our supervisor and board filling an empty position. Because your face becomes familiar, you beat out a new person seeking your position. I am also deeply saddened after listening to the elderly gentleman, Mr. Roland Brath, from Harson's Island describing his situation as an island resident stranded on the mainland due to ferry closures after midnight, and his elderly wife being refused the use of the restroom at our police station. This is just another example of what little service or amenities are provided for the taxpaying citizens that reside on Harson's Island. What has the township done for these citizens when Mr. Bryson decides not to run the ferry service and leave people stranded? Need I remind this township board that the island is also part of Clay Township? This disgraceful disregard to those citizens, their needs and safety, has been going on for years. Please, no need to remind all the lack of fire and EMS services on the island. My homeowner's insurance will most likely be making its adjustments for my lack of protection after the recent public display of the Old Club fire disaster. When is enough going to be enough? When are the taxpaying citizens that live on Harson's Island going to get a fair and consideration, service, and representation? I live on Harson's Island. I don't just exist here." Here are my comments. Truth to power. You have known Mr. John DeBoyer for the last 30 years working at the water department. He retired. You dismissed the five applicants without the courtesy of an interview, never knowing what their skills, ideas, and knowledge can bring to our township, which Harson's Island is a part of. Our township needs fresh, new input in moving on forward. We won't get that by shifting around the same old people, family members, and friends in different positions. I hope something my daughter and I have said here today will stick in the minds of our citizens come Election Day and vote for change.
Thank you. Any more public comments? I don't like you.
I'd like to comment and respond to your.
This is public comments.
Well, I can respond to it if I want to.
No.
All right. I'll wait.
Hi, everybody. I'm sure you all know me or of me. My name is Mike Bembis. I live at 1713 St. Clair River Drive in Algenack, Michigan. I'm on the Algenack City Council, but I'm also your postmaster of Algenack and Harson's Island. May 13th is a very special day, it's Clay Days. It's also Food Drive Day. So, before you go to Clay Days, put a can or two of food in your mailbox or by your mailbox so we can pick up. I see Mark here, and I want to thank Mark personally because the Algenack Lions every year give us a generous check unmatched by anybody. I'll be bugging the Pearl Beach Lions, and Art, you're on the rotary, so I'm coming for you for money, too. Algenack and Clay Township and Harson's Island raise almost 5,000 pounds of food a year, not counting the cash we get, way over and above what Maureen City does. Maureen City's not even close. So, I want to thank everybody in our three communities. Remind everybody that the food we get stays in the area. It all goes to the local food bank at the Methodist Church in Algenack, which services, again, Clay, Algenack, and Harson's Island. I am sure that all of you are on Facebook with me, because every time there's an election, I go and say, who's the new person? I got a friend on my Facebook. And if you haven't seen my posts, I don't know, because I post a lot. But please, when you see that, share it, okay? The knowledge is what gets people to donate. Go through your shelves, find a couple cans, put it out there. But please also tell everybody that you know, so we can make a difference. I'd really like to see that 5,000 mark topped this year. You know, if you know of a group that maybe I've missed, who might be interested, please let them know that we take cash donations, and the cash donations are good, too, because all the food we get starts to dwindle down. And Miriam, at the food bank, who's in her 90s, has been running the food bank for over 50 years, she saves that, those checks, and so that when we get into November, she can restock up. So, that's a good thing. But I'm going to ask you guys a couple things. I got a little thing here to remind you. It's May 13th. If you would put in your lobby, and also maybe on your sign, and I have a big poster here also, if you want to find a place to put it. And again, please nag the living daylights out of everybody so that everybody knows, and we can break that 5,000 pound mark, and I appreciate your support. And thank you. And if you don't mind, I'll just hand these to you.
Yeah. Thanks for your efforts. Oh, you don't have to. Hey, Mike, would you, would you prefer a donation of, a monetary donation, or would you prefer canned goods?
Either way, whatever your heart leads you to, whatever you can.
If we make a monetary donation, who do we make it out to? The Algenack Food Pantry?
Algenack Food Pantry, yes.
Great.
Yep. Make checks to Algenack Food Pantry.
Right.
And if we choose to live, leave canned goods, we leave them by the side of our mailbox?
You can leave them by the side of your mailbox. You can also drop them off at the post office or at the church. You can text me, and I'll come and send somebody right there to get them. So, you don't have to wait till the 13th, if you're going to be busy in Clay Days, and you leave them out on the 12th or even the 14th. That's fine.
Okay.
Give me a quick text or Facebook, and I'll either go out there, I'll send a carrier out there to get it.
Thank you.
We can drop off at the Lions Club. We'll take care of them.
Absolutely. And the Lions will, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi. Cindy Pilato, 2770 Cottage Lane on Harson's Island. I would like to just kind of tag on along with our Donna Holakoglu's letter in respect to the fact that it seems that it takes a catastrophe or something serious to happen on the island for the attention to be on the lack of services on the island. Once again, we obviously had the fire recently. I am also on a committee for the San Souci Downtown, excuse me, the San Souci Downtown Incorporated Committee that we recently hosted a very, in my opinion, a very good luncheon for a lot of public officials that were, quite frankly, shocked and appalled at the lack of services and the lack of attention our island seems to get from Clay Township. We have always, my husband and I joke, feel like the redheaded stepchild. We don't seem to get very much attention unless something, some kind of catastrophe happens. I hope going forward, there can be more conversation between the island, the island committees, the island. the island committees, the island, the, all the different organizations on the island, to start bringing some attention to our services and the lack thereof and the different grants that are available out there. And start maybe focusing on some of the grants, recreational or otherwise, and putting some of that money over the, on the other side of the river. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening. Kathy Schweickert, Harson's Island. I know this is just a comment section, so I'm hoping my comments will be addressed later on in your meeting because I understand that's how this works. The item that I'm particularly interested in is your item 1C, which is PCE Engineering for San Souci Wastewater Treatment. I believe that's what it stands for. Cost factors $9,025. And also item 1I, which is, again, PCE Carbon Credit Study for $6,350. Carbon Credit Work Plan Study. And I did review the material that was provided online. So there is a letter that is dated March 29, 2003, which to me appears to be a proposed scope of work with a cost factor. The other item, hold on, I gotta get my phone to pull up, is it looks to be an invoice. And in particular, the items I'm questioning or would like further information on is item number three, which is site location, which appears to maybe be already, site locations decided or potentially decided. I know you're shaking your head no, but I'm just asking questions to be later answered. If you choose to do so now, that'd be great. Also, item number six was a typographical, sorry for my misspoke there. But again, where are those located? And item number seven was a narrative for congressional support. Not sure what that means. So if somebody can enlighten the whole group on what that may mean. And part of the reason I'm asking these questions is because I'm not sure how many people know. In particular, San Souci Bar has been well over a year trying to deal with the septic issue for San Souci as a whole, in particular, the bar. And we have been working very diligently with the local officials. In particular, Artie, we had to approach in regards to being able to use an easement to get to the property that we had bought on Maple Street. We are in the process of wetlands delineation, so we're not trying to duplicate services and money, for sure. We have also spoke back in March with Gary Peters' aide, Mr. Schmidt, on a federal level. We have talked, spoken twice with, face-to-face, with Senator Hertel and his aide, Paul McAdams, in March. I know Artie was, I believe, maybe it wasn't March, but in that timeframe, Artie was present. And it was a combination with Haida and other things. But since then, in regards to what you just said, Cindy, Senator Hertel was back on the island with his aide about a week and a half ago and did the tour around the island and had the opportunity to speak with our general manager, Robert Coombs, which if anybody wants to speak to him and/or Bruce Schweickert, those two have been very heavily involved in trying to get the septic system in place for, in particular, the bar, but for the whole downtown. And our stumbling point at this point, which the senators are trying to help us with, is Eagle, which is not just here in our little Harson's Island. Eagle seems to have become a problem to overcome on many levels. We have attended wastewater treatment conferences in Lansing. We've looked at, I'll call it, these plants. Cost factor for just the bar is $700,000 to $800,000. That's a big number.
How much was that?
$700,000 to $800,000 just for the bar alone. But our original was to try to do the whole downtown. We had St. Clair County Health Department design a system for whole downtown. And that is the avenue we are definitely still trying to approach. I understand maybe Artie in this board, he has a different avenue, but that's the one we're trying to approach because we can self-fund it and make it happen. Senator Hertel seems to be very interested in that. And his aide has spoken to my husband a couple times about where we're at with our wetlands delineation and moving forward. So this being public comments, I would really appreciate, along with the rest of the downtown businesses, what's going on because we see these flags all over the place. I know there's maybe been a Facebook posting in regards to what the flags were all about. But there seems to be a lot of non-communication with business owners in downtown and potentially residents that may be hooked up to the system if this goes through. We're looking, from our point of view, from San Souci Bar, to make it a more quicker solution because we are going to be pumping and hauling. That's what we're going to be doing at this point. So if anybody has any questions, I can provide any phone numbers to people other than me doing hearsay upon hearsay and talk directly to either Bruce Schweickert or Robert Coombs. I know Artie's been in contact for sure with our manager, Robert Coombs. So I just wanted to see if later on in this meeting we could have some answers to some of these questions, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. Christine Holcomb, 1202 Gore Drive, Harson's Island. I just had a couple other things that I'd like to ask the board if you could possibly give us an idea or answer the questions when you do get to these items on your agenda, kind of pigging back on what Kathy just talked about. I was just wondered if there's going to be any type of a public meeting or hearing on the system that's being proposed so residents and business owners can get an idea of what's being proposed to them because I can tell you they have no clue. They were all concerned about what these flags were for. I wondered if there's been a survey conducted before we start spending money? Like, the proposed money that's already out there for PCE is over $15,000. Has there even been a survey down to see if residents are even interested in tying into a system like this? How long would it take a system like this to be up and running? And I know there would be carbon credits. Would those carbon credits stay then on the island for future infrastructure? And the system isn't going to correct the septic issue with Eagle, so I don't know how we get that corrected if we're not going to focus on it for other people that own vacant property that can't build on it because they can't install a septic. And changing gears, I just had a question on, I know this was asked a little while back when you put your schedule out for meetings this year about possibly getting some more meetings on Harson's Island. And I didn't know if you've reached a decision on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? No more public comments? Okay, thank you for everyone's comments. Next is Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Court, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from the board meeting of 4/17/23 and of the workshop on 4/27/23. And listed under the reports, we have the payroll report, the board-approved reports on 4/17/2023, and the in-between meetings.
Support. Okay, motion and support.
Oh, I'm sorry. And we had the correspondence, but that was read, so. We will also be receiving that in. But there was a correspondent, the letter from Donna Holakoglu. Holakoglu? Thank you. Holakoglu.
All right. And you still support, John?
Yes.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Yes. I realize we amended the consent agenda to PCE Engineering, San Souci, and the carbon study. I'd like to make an amendment to the consent agenda and move that, those two resolutions, or not resolutions, but studies to the public hearing at the next meeting.
Well, it's not, the public hearing's not about those.
I want a public hearing at the next meeting for these issues that nobody knows about.
Okay, well, we'll be, we'll have to at some point do the public hearing, right, Anthony? I'm not sure.
Well, can't we do a public hearing on the studies and get information out to the public?
Yeah.
And find out what it's about.
And we're going to get to it.
And what carbon credits are. So right now, nobody knows about it.
Okay.
And we're going to approve $15,000.
Okay.
And I say no.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you what. If you still want to do a public hearing after these, after we talk about this, we can do that.
Well, I want to do a public hearing now. We can talk about it. But I still, I still make a motion that we do a public hearing on it.
Okay, on May, when do you want the public hearing?
The next meeting is possible.
May 15th.
May 15th. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion for a public meeting on the San Souci Sewer Project, May 15th. And, well, I got a vote. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say one thing. So...
Yeah, let's have Anthony address it.
Huh?
Anthony wants to address it.
I just want to say something about public hearings. So you want them to count. So a major part about a public hearing, I mean, you don't want to waste everybody's time, is you have to advertise for the public hearing.
Right. So we need five, yeah.
So we'll have to advertise.
You gotta get them advertised.
Whatever the availability is, yeah.
I'm going to have a town hall on the island regarding this. What? Well, that's what I, I was going to do it on the island, but I have a motion to do it here next, in two weeks.
There wasn't, he didn't say specifically that he wanted it here. He just said he wanted a public hearing.
What's your motion?
Want to say in June? Because it can't be the next meeting, gotta advertise it.
Right. Within the, a motion within the time constraints allowed by law.
I would, I would want to do the public hearing once we have all the information for people.
What is the public hearing on, Mark?
The two studies that we're having to spend $15,000 on.
Before we approve it?
I want to know exactly what they are.
Okay.
And how they're going to go about in doing it. I just don't want to approve $15,000 to do two studies without, without any resolution on what comes up with it.
Okay, well, we're going to talk about it. And you can vote no on it if you want. That's okay. So...
Well, my motion stands.
Why don't you make it for the mid-June meeting since we have to advertise it on the June 1st?
Okay, amend the meet, amend the motion to the June meeting for the public hearing on the two issues stated.
Do you think it's held on the island?
That meeting's scheduled here right now.
Well, then I guess your motion's to adjourn it.
So why don't you say we'll have a motion on Harson's Island on a date to be announced?
Well, don't we have that on our format on the meeting schedule? Don't we have Harson's Island on that?
Not, not until, not until after July.
How do you want him to amend it, to say a date to be announced? Within.
It should be on the island.
Yeah, date to be announced, preferably on the island.
Okay. So there's a motion to have a public hearing on the San Souci septic project on a date to be announced.
Okay.
And I supported it.
Okay, we support it. Any more discussion?
Do we have any idea how long the engineering is going to take? The whole discovery phase?
Well, you can ask that when we talk about it, and then Anthony can answer it.
If we're doing engineering, we're going to have a public hearing before the engineering reports are...
Yeah, we're putting the cart before that. That's why the date's to be announced.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to have a public hearing on Harson's Island for the San Souci sewer project on a future date to be announced.
And support.
And any more discussion? Hearing now. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
We still didn't finish on the consent agenda.
Right. So we gotta go back to the consent agenda. Do we have a, I'm not even sure, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes.
And support?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I had a comment, too, on Donna's letter. I'm also extremely disappointed with how the selection of our new trustee was handled. In December, Artie requested applicants to provide their resumes and interest in serving as a trustee to replace Joanne Shirkey. I specifically requested to also receive these applications. Didn't see them until the Thursday before our April meeting. That weekend at Kroger, I ran into Mark. And I asked him if he thought we were going to appoint the new trustee on Monday. He told me he thought we were just going to be discussing it. That would need to be interviewed, and the process would be followed. So I felt relieved. Then, when Monday came, it was just the opposite. Without having a chance to meet and interview any applicant, the board simply made an immediate decision, put John DeBoyer in the trustee seat, asking him to vote on issues for the rest of the meeting. I don't even know if John had the documents in his possession or had time to review them. I shared them with him on my computer. And I just wonder, is this how the board treats such an important decision? And I apologize, Donna. As far as I know, the other applicants weren't interviewed by anyone or even invited to that meeting when the decision was going to be made. And when Donna speaks of this appointment being hand-selected, it's difficult for me to disagree with this line of thinking. Applicants turned in their resumes starting as early as December but were not selected because Joanne Shirkey had not turned in her resignation. Coincidentally, after John sent his email of interest on April 4th, we received the resignation and immediately appointed him on April 17th, the following meeting. So I just...
I don't believe that date's accurate, Maureen.
Your email, your email said April 4th on it. I have a copy of it. So I can show it to you right now. Want to see it? Go right to the agendas. It's there.
We'll stay on track.
Well...
We have motion and support.
Yep, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing now. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, new business. We have Resolution 2023-11, Performance Resolution for municipalities. It's basically so we can work in MDOT right away.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2023-11, Performance Resolution for municipalities for MDOT on the right, work on roadway. And this is a, pretty much an annual thing.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Christie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Motion carries. And next, we have Resolution 2023-10. It's the project plan for the wastewater system improvements. And that was what we had the public hearing about, is to go forward with the application for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund.
Court, I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2023-10, the project plan for wastewater system improvements.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing now. Do a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Christie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, we moved that one down. Next, we have the, the, this isn't for the wastewater treatment plant. It's the waste, it's the water plant. Blanket PO for plant chemicals for the water plant. We did that last year also. They can, this allows them to buy chemicals in bulk, and they can get a cheaper rate. And that $40,000, that's, that's the total price. So our costs would be 2/3 of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the water treatment plant, blanket PO for water plant and chemicals, in the amount of $40,000 with Clay paying 2/3.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Artie, how does this compare to what they spent last year?
I believe it's the same amount.
Same amount, most familiar.
Yeah. Yeah.
And does Denise, does she send you invoices as items get purchased?
Not, not unless they're major.
Do we know that she's spending all forty K annually?
I don't think they, they did, but I can't tell you that for sure.
So we don't have a good checks and balances on that one?
Well, we're working on that. They, they don't have to notify us unless it's over twenty thousand dollars. That's how it's written in the contract.
Do they give you an update of where we are general ledger wise when they have their meeting with you?
I can request that, but no.
And would we request that from the city of Algonquin or from the resident?
City of Algonquin.
All right. Can we put that on our radar?
Sure. Okay. Where are we? Do we have motion and support?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Ten grand, so I'll have to do a roll call. Artie, yes. Christie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next, we have the investment advisory agreement. Chrissy, you wanna take that one?
Yep. So I'm requesting approval to enter into an investment advisory agreement with Robinson Capital Management. I'm very familiar with them. They're, they do a lot of speaking at my conferences. This agreement would allow me to work with Robinson Capital to create an account with surplus township funds utilizing their investment management services, according to the Township Investment Policy, while following all requirements of Public Act twenty. It would allow me to diversify our investments, moving toward a laddered investment portfolio. The service that Robinson Capital Management provides are advisory or fiduciary in nature, and are not to be confused as brokerage services, meaning that they don't make anything off of the investments that we are, that we would be investing in. The fee for their service is ten basis points annually on all balances maintained through the account, which, if you're talking about a million dollars, that's about a thousand dollars annually.
Per million?
Per million.
And that's a good thing?
Well, it's pretty cheap.
Yeah, it's pretty cheap. Interest rates are going up, and I know it, it pays now to have someone watch where we're putting our money, so we can capitalize on our, our investments.
So I've been investing in CDs, insured cash sweep, a governmental CD program, and a governmental pooled investment account. So this would be going a little over what I've been working on.
I believe your store card is pristine.
Interest rates are, interest rates are good right now.
We're gonna have to create a couple line items on, for the budget, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly, I've talked to other municipalities about their accounts, so I don't know exactly how they're gonna set everything up, but I believe that we will have to open a new bank account, a custodial bank account for these funds. And then I don't know what else we'll need for general ledger.
Gotcha. Who are we using? North Star or?
Our main bank is North Star.
Christie, are you aware of other municipalities that are currently using Robinson Capital?
Yes.
Can you give us a couple of examples?
I know for sure that the city of New Baltimore has some funds invested through them. I didn't bring a lot. That, the city of New Baltimore is who I spoke with.
And they're happy with their agreement?
Yes.
Lastly, should we, should we get our attorney to take a look at the, the agreement before we sign it?
I was gonna suggest we make a motion to approve it pending our approval or blessing from our attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I have all the confidence in the world in Christie, but this is a large agreement, twelve-page agreement.
You know, we, we can.
Get another set of eyes on it?
Yeah, do a motion if, if the board chooses to approve it, but after our attorney gives it a blessing.
Legal review?
So we can, we can motion to.
Is it your motion, or are you just, is this being discussed?
Yep.
Mr. Supervisor, is that your motion?
Sure. I'll motion that we approve this, this contract after a positive review from the township attorney.
Support.
Motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Contracts are roll call. Roll call. Christie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Motion passes. All right. Next, we gotta hire some people. George?
About time.
Good evening.
You look familiar.
We'd like permission from the Clay Township Board of Trustees to hire three new part-time firefighters. Do you want me to read all three at once, or do you want me to do one at a time?
Let's do all at once.
All right. The first one is Dave Welsh. He recently moved back from Florida. Dave is a past employee of the fire department. He holds the following certifications, Fire One, Fire Two, and he's also Michigan State Certified EMT. Second employee would be Nicholas Patrick Hudgens. He's currently a firefighter from Clyde Fire Department. His duties are firefighter, driver operator, and EMT. He's also employed at the Duty Free America up in Port Huron. Nicholas is certified Fire One, Fire Two, and also a state certified EMT. And last is Les Joseph Pettiprin. He is currently a firefighter for New Haven, and his duties include firefighting, driver operator, and also an EMT. Les is also employed with critical heating and cooling, and also Michigan Air Guard. And that would be the Air Force Medical Tech Mission Aerospace. Les is certified Fire One, Fire Two, and also a state certified EMT.
Sounds great. Does anybody have any questions for him? Dave, where were you in Florida?
Uh, in Orlando.
Oh, okay. Welcome back.
Yeah, it gets expensive to live down there, actually.
Yeah. Well, good. Good to see you.
You're not going back down there in January, are you?
Oh, no. No.
They've all passed their background check.
Did you use up the airbase?
No.
No?
Okay. Nicola, is it Nick?
Yes.
Okay. And Les, you guys both know how to swim? I already asked Dave this.
Absolutely.
All right. I was asking if you guys know how to swim. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
No, good job.
I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three part-time hires for the Clay Township Fire Department, including Nicholas Hudgens, Les Pettiprin, and David Welsh.
Support. Hey, motion and support. Any more discussion?
Great job, Chief.
Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, guys. Welcome aboard.
I just got two more things. One, siren on the island, the last one that needs to be installed. We have a location for that. Hopefully, that gets planted Thursday. I've got the paperwork all set. I have to have your signature on the permit, so I'll run that up to county, get that taken care of. And also, James Holmes, one of our employees, passed his EMT class today, so.
All right, James.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, did everyone hear those sirens go off at one o'clock today?
No.
No?
No.
Hmm? No? I didn't hear. Is Blue Bill hooked up yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was hooked up last week.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The cell channel's got one. They just have to put it up on.
Okay. I didn't hear that one.
All right, where am I? Okay.
One G?
Council on Aging?
G, yep. We have appropriation for twenty twenty-three Council Aging at three thousand dollars. Budgeted item. It's a yearly thing we do with them. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation for the twenty twenty-three Council on Aging in the amount of three thousand dollars, coming from line one zero one, nine six five, nine six five zero two.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? I, I have to check. I think we still have to do the three thousand for the Mainland Museum and the Harson's Island Museum, too. So if that's it, we'll do that next meeting.
They usually come in at the same time, don't they?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll just, we'll just do it. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, we have zoning amendment map change. Sixty-six oh-three Dyke Road. That's Dr. Caspirowitz's old office, if that makes sense, down around by the dyke. They wanna go from C-two, C-three, passed our planning commission, and it went to the county, and they blessed it, and now it's before us. And I, I believe what they wanna do, but I mean, once you change the zoning, they can do anything within that zoning, but they wanna have a boat club where they rent boats. You know, you, you buy a membership, and it's a national company, and they'll do outings and boating and that type of thing. It'll be marine-related. They will have to come before the planning commission for site plan and, and all that. This is just for the zoning.
Rezoning.
Artie, is that Freedom Boat Club?
Yes. Yes, I'm, I'm, I couldn't remember. It's called Freedom Boat Club.
Where will they store the boats?
Well, that would be the planning commission's, there, there's a canal on the back.
Yeah, they, they.
Just along the.
Traditionally, they don't store the boats there. They'll come in there for rental purposes, once somebody rents a boat.
Yeah.
They'll maybe store it somewhere else, and somewhere else.
And do we know, are they planning to use that existing building, or?
I, I would assume so, but again, that will be up to the planning commission.
Commission's site plan, once we, once we get, yes, just.
So I noticed it said it was on the master plan, already to go from.
Yep.
C-two to C-three. It's already on the master plan?
I'm not su, well, I know it's, it's commercial area.
Well, I need to know if it's on the master plan to be converted.
Well, you should have asked that before the meeting. Go out there and look. I, I don't know. It's C-two on the map right now, and, and the application is to change it to C-three. I'll entertain a motion.
Court, I'll make a motion to approve the planning and zoning map amended sixty-three, or sixty-six oh-three Dyke Road from a C-two to a C-three.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion now?
Mark, do you remember if there were any objections to this when it came before planning commission?
No, not really. Nope. Nope.
You don't remember, or there were?
Teasing, yeah. If there were, I would have remembered.
Yeah.
How's that?
The only thing that was, these owners own two vacant lots. This is only in regards to the lot that has the building on it. We did nothing with the two vacant lots, nor did they request us to do anything with it.
For the storage. Right. It's just for the lot for the building. Thank you.
So it would go C-two, or C-three if this is approved, and then C-two, C-two, and then a residential?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how it is there, but I think that's about right.
Residuentials are on the other side of the canal.
What about that little?
There's a house there.
There's one house still.
I just, that's who I wondered if he, or whoever owns it, he was, he was, did he have objections to it, or, or concerns?
He did have objections to it because it was only relating to the lot that houses the building, not the two vacant lots. And they would have to come back if they were to request a rezoning on the two vacant lots. He seemed to be okay with the rezoning of just that building at this point.
And they understand that.
Okay.
Where the colony.
Okay, we have, we have motion and, any more discussion? Hearing none. I can't, now I bet, I'll do a roll call. Do roll call. Christie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have both the San Souci Engineering for the San Souci Treatment Plant and PCE Carbon Credit Study. Now, oh, he's already up there. The, to answer some of your questions, we don't have a specific location yet. We're looking at three or four options. In fact, I had talked to Robert Coombs from the San Souci Bar. He, he offered the four lots on Maple.
Hold on a second. That is not a correct statement.
Well, I talked to him, and he, that's what he told me.
No, he, he's, I just talked to him again today.
Okay, well.
He's, that we're proceeding forward with what I just explained earlier, Septic Field. We are open to listen to whatever happens.
Okay.
We are in more immediate concern because we are trying to get past the Eagle difficulty. I don't know of any, nor do, maybe you have the answer to this. Does anything you're proposing pass anything with Eagle? Because that's our roadblock right now.
We'll, we'll get to that.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Um.
I've been here, so we're not necessarily offering a property at all.
Okay, 'cause I was under the opinion he would give me a, a option on it. Sorry for.
That's okay.
But, but we, we have three or four, four possible locations. Um, and we went to New York to see a, a plant like it and toured it, and like I mentioned in the supervisor's report, it was, couldn't find anybody to say anything bad about it. So before us, we have, to, to get funded, funding or anything like this, you gotta do the engineering first.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing. It's not engineering as you would understand it, as we're, we know what we're gonna do completely, and there's engineering, and that's nine thousand dollars in engineering. So in the last two years, I mean, you, you've heard one of the projects, which was the Sanitary Interceptor, roughly three million dollar project, and we had to do a, a lot of applications to get a million dollars for free, which basically is, that means that does not get carried on to anyone's bill. People with fixed incomes are, are helped by that, and that takes time on our, on our part. Now, it's very competitive right now to get money, but there is quite a lot from the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed last year, and we wanna make sure, that's our job as the township engineers, to try to get as much free money as possible from what sources are out there for this township. And so that takes writing narratives, that takes filling out applications, that takes, you know, soliciting, you know, the different potential sources of funding. And, and I wanted, if you'd let me, I'd like to read a narrative that I wrote for the project in, in Harson's Island, because this is, this is what we do, to try to stand out amongst all the hundreds of thousands of projects. Because this is, this is what we do, to try to stand out amongst all the hundreds of thousands of projects that are in, just in the state of Michigan alone. So, and bear with me, because this is how we have to do it, to craft a narrative to get people to care about us. So, the location description, the town of Sans Souci was founded on April 24th, 1900, when the first postmaster, William Lacroix, suggested the town be named without care in French because of its peaceful nature. The town is located on the South Channel of Harson's Island and is a hub for boaters and recreationists visiting the Saint Clair flats, a large coastal marsh at the mouth of the Saint Clair River that provides pristine habitat for migratory birds, sport fish, and other aquatic life. Project challenges. The residents of Harson Island have relied on individual septic systems as their only source of sanitary wastewater disposal for the last 100 years. As the population has slowly grown to approximately 1,000 year-round residents, the septic systems have been tending with rising water levels, seasonal ice jam, flooding, and severe rain events. The 2020 river levels were just the latest in a series of high-water events that have caused the population to have to sandbag around their houses and install expensive seawalls to protect their properties from floodwaters. Septic systems and those events were mostly inoperable and a major source of contamination to environmentally sensitive wetlands and ecosystems around the island. Project description, due to the significant infrastructure challenges faced, faced by Sans Souci, local businesses and residents alike have voiced their need for a solution to protect their businesses, homes, and properties. The town leadership has worked with the township engineering firm, Project Control Engineering, to come up with an innovative solution suited to meet the challenges and strategic goals of the Sans Souci sanitary infrastructure. The project proposed is to build a concentrated sanitary collection system for the business district of Sans Souci, serving the town in basic services such as post office, grocery store, restaurant, and emergency response. To protect the natural setting and character of Sans Souci, the township engineers are proposing to install a greenhouse-style building, housing a hybrid attached growth algae wheel treatment plant, provided in an unimposing structure that blends into the district master plan. The 3,500 square foot plant would treat a projected sanitary flow of 25,000 gallons per day, able to service approximately 100 residential equivalent units. Energy consumption at the plant will be reduced using solar panels. The algae photosynthetic process will meet the township goals of greenhouse gas reduction by methane emission elimination through direct air capture. This in turn will lower the carbon footprint of the project, create viable, verifiable carbon units, and meet the sustainability goals for future generations. Our project benefit summary is to stimulate economic development in Sans Souci, protect the pristine nature and peaceful character of Harson's Island, and reduce the township's carbon footprint using green infrastructure. So, if we're gonna stand out, we're gonna have to kind of play by the, if we believe it or not, the, the, what they're, they're wanting us to do in terms of being a sustainable infrastructure, right? So, those check a lot of boxes for the people that hold the purse strings at the state level, while still maintaining the nature of, of the island, not having a, you know, wastewater is, is not, is not a pretty business. And it's just the nature of treating, treating wastewater. But we, we've searched and searched everything we possibly can, even globally, in Europe and otherwise, to try to find something that, that isn't imposing, that doesn't have an odor, that is available to, to, in a small footprint, and that can be affordable. By us fighting to get free money, it means that the cost for that installation, both the collection system and the plant, would be zero to the residents, which is, which is, that's a major factor in, in being successful in, in providing those services. I mean, the price to go to Harson's Island isn't, isn't getting any cheaper. So the ability to have some basic services on the island is pretty important, right? I mean, be able to go get some groceries, or have a restaurant that's open if, you know, you don't have electricity or whatever. I live on Coindashane, so I look at Harson's Island every day. You know, so that's the point of the, the two proposals. The one is, is what I just read, read to you, that, that's what we have to do in order to stand out and try to get basically sanitary services to that part of Harson's Island that services everybody for free, right? That's, that's really important and hard to do. In the last two years, I, we've been a part of four and a half million dollars of free money just for Clay Township alone. That's more than actually any other township that we, and city that we serve. So, you know, that's, that's what we want to continue to try to do to help you guys. The other aspect is the carbon credits, so that's, that's something that's really, I can, I can explain to you how carbon credits work, probably nobody's ever heard of that before. It was, it was a situ-, it was, so, so carbon credits are a commodity. They're trade, they're traded on the commodity exchange like soybeans. And so they, when, when wastewater, so, so how a carbon credit works is, it's a metric ton of carbon that's sequestered for 100 years. And so how that happens in this setting is, is algae is a plant, it's photosynthetic. So plants breathe in carbon dioxide and emit oxygen. So, so that then takes the carbon dioxide that everybody wants to sequester right now, and puts it into, into the body of that algae. That algae is actually treating the wastewater as it makes contact with it. So, because oxygen is a part of the wastewater treatment process. By sequestering that carbon dioxide from the air into the algae plant, what it does is that it, it non-stop is creating this metric ton of, of carbon, which we verify. So the process of verification is, you create a base, you figure out what the baseline is, which is how much methane, which is what makes the odor, right? So why this, why this process is odor-free is because what makes odor is methane, right? That's what you're smelling. So methane is that, is that form of carbon that the algae is, is breathing in and emitting oxygen in exchange. And so what we have to do is figure out what the baseline is, which is the carbon credit study is, the baseline of how much methane would be produced if you were to do this in a traditional fashion, right? Which would be open lagoon kind of fashion that, that nobody really, they're condemning them all over the country right now because they, they're emitting methane into the air, odor and, and otherwise. And so that's what our process engineers do, so that, that money, that 6350 is for PrimoTal, which is our process engineers in Kalamazoo, to do a model of that baseline. And that model is verifiable through a, a company that's certified by ISO. And so the ISO certification process then says, okay, this is what you would do normally, this is what you're gonna do that isn't gonna emit that, and so now we're gonna assign you carbon credits at, for, for every million gallons or however we're, we're calculating it. We, we assign carbon credits, which belong to the township, they're, they're used to offset the cost to the end users. And there's really not a lot of other options for us, even for the long term, to prevent, you know, a lot of costs, to, to offset those costs with something. So that's pretty unique. The Congress, both the federal one and, and our state representatives, are very excited to promote a technology like that in the state of Michigan, right? We have them in Indiana, right, right across the border, there's one in upstate New York, there's 30, I think, yeah, there's one in Colorado, there's 30 in the United States, and I think 60 around the world. So, and they're all, they're all more, a lot of them are this size, 25,000 gallons per day, 50,000 gallons per day in that area. So that, that's what the two amounts are. If we're not able to, if we're unsuccessful to get free money, the project goes nowhere. Because there's no way that, that little people that are impacted or, or benefited by it, or will be able to absorb that cost. We're talking multi-millions of dollars, we want that free, so that.
Is permitted in Michigan right now?
Yeah, yes, because it's considered an RBC, which is what we used to have in Algonac. So, so that's the Eagle process that we discussed. So Eagle is very, is very, is already gone through the vetting process of determining what model is used to compare to that technology. And that's called the RBC, the Rotating Biocontactor, which is from the 1970s, so.
So Eagle's already aware of this?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So it's licensed to the state of Michigan to be approved?
It, it doesn't go that way, what happens is our wastewater treatment standards are a part of the 10 state standards.
Right, I understand that.
So the 10, so Indiana, for example, is one of the 10 states, and the 10 state standards. So once it's, once it's already in use and, and, you know, comes.
So can we just migrate that right into Harson's Island?
Pretty much, yes.
Question though, whether the technology is approved or not, I could be wrong, but in all the conversations that have been being had, it's not necessarily whether options are usable or not, but that you can't build this on a wetland. And pretty much all of Harson's Island is considered wetlands, so where do you build it then? Because if we can't get a septic field because of wetland, how can you build a structure on wetlands?
That, what, so wetlands, delineated wetlands is determined by the wetland maps. So not all of Harson's Island is wetlands, but there are, there are, you have the wetland maps, and then you do a wetland delineation, which I think you're going through. So that dispenses, depends on species that are on the property and, and what have you. And, and free money wouldn't be able to be used on wetlands, not sometimes. Some, some programs will say that's, you know, like USDA rural development doesn't allow it.
So were you out to the island and looked at these four or five different sites? And can you tell us where these four or five different sites are, that you look for or look at?
I mean, so I'm familiar with the island, because we've, we've mapped the entire island's water system, and I've been there many times. But, but they're all in the Sans Souci area, so I don't know how I can say or not say what sites we looked at, I mean.
We're all pretty familiar.
We live on the island, we know every city.
He's gone this year. Can I say Main Street, I can guess maybe where, because that's kind of what I've evolved into.
If I gave you, if I gave you like the geographic area, would that help?
Yeah.
So that we were focused on, so like down to Taj Moom Marina is as far south as we would need to go. And up to, what's the road that goes up to the gas station? I'm blanking on. La Croix, thank you.
That's not, I'm sorry, that's not what I meant. The location, these all the flags, very familiar with all the flags. Where are you talking?
So, so I think the flag, I think the, you mentioned the flag. So the flags are mistigged, so whenever you dig in an area, you, or if you're trying to locate existing utilities, you'll call mistig and they'll flag it.
Yeah.
That's all that is.
We're trying to figure out which site, they mentioned three or four. Which specific locations within the flag, are you guys looking into doing this?
Okay, I mean, Artie, do you?
I mean, we don't have, have a specific location, yeah, we're gonna be looking at three or four, we got different options.
We're gonna get them right.
We're, we're gonna, it's, it's, it's not gonna be on South Channel Drive, it's gonna be behind, closer to Green Street.
And look, we haven't, we haven't gone into that depth, in-depth look.
That's our next step.
Yeah, so what we did was, we had, we still had some ability to mapping, do mapping during the Sogran, right? That would be free to the township, so we were able to start that process a little bit when we were doing, when we were doing work out there. But then, we're, our primary focus with flags and whatnot and, and topographic surveying is the collection system. So the collection system, we need the raw data of, you know, where the highs and lows are, and how, how we're gonna be addressing any canal crossings or what have you. And that's the data that we were, that we were able to capture, right, is, is for the collection system. We have a good grasp on how the collection system would run. I mean, one major cost factor is pump stations. So we put a pump station, and that's a big energy cost, it's a big maintenance cost, and so we needed to kind of get a feel for how many pump stations would be in this hypothetical collection system, right, of the business district. So that's what the topographic surveying was focused on. We really, we don't have any topographic surveying on any of the potential sites at all, zero. So we were just focused on that, and then we kind of assumed that, you know, we're gonna need to have a budget associated with that in the future, beyond, beyond anything that's here.
And not specifically?
And we need money from the, you know, that's where that free money comes in, needs to be infused into a project first.
And not specifically for this project, but just other ones you said across the country? You mentioned obviously free money, everybody likes it when they don't have to pay for something.
Yeah.
But aside from the bill, what kind of cost in other areas of the country are there to like, assume when people hook up, then you have to start paying into it, or there's a cost to hook up?
Right.
So instructions is one thing, but?
Right.
What's the cost to be involved? Because for people who have existing septic, you know, is there, is it really worth it? Or would there be a motivation for them to hook up if they already have an alternative that's working?
Yeah, so, you know, we asked other communities that have done this, gone through this process, how they addressed it. And I know that most of the ones that we looked at that were dealing with this technology said that there was no mandate to, to hook up.
No, but if you wanted to, what would the cost be?
Right, so, so, yeah, I don't know, I mean.
We're gonna have to.
It ranges, it ranges, and it, there's, there's a lot of factors. I mean, we built the, the collection system in Lagoon in, in Burrville, right? Which is very, they don't have, you know, it's not a very wealthy town, right? So we got free money for that, it was what, 2008, I think it was, to build that, to build that system. And then there was, we went out for as much as we could, and at that time, it was a traditional way of assistance for the people that could, could help pay for it, because their septic systems were completely filled. I mean, they were just, it was in the digits, you know? And so, so those are all the things that we try to engage in, associated with your cost, upfront cost and your long-term cost, to delineate those and then bring those to, present them to you prior to even getting into, you know, major, you know, we're toporing the site, we're doing all those things. Because that has, there has to be a buy-in from the, from the community, right?
So, and what do you have planned?
Anthony, I think when we talk about this, the biggest thing is keeping it centrally located.
Yeah.
Where we can build gravity from every point.
That's right.
And adding lift stations.
Yep. One, I think one.
Are we gonna use a mass reader from the buildings? And to a high-pressure system coming into it?
I think what we'll do is, is the one pump station would, based on our topo data, would be at the headworks of the plant, of the proposed plant. So we give one lift, you know, everything gets there, one lift to an elevation, and then the, the plant runs entirely by gravity at that point. All the way out. Yep.
A, a, as, as far as costs, what they did out in New York, if you hooked up your house right away, there was no cost to hook up.
Yeah, that's right.
And then if you wanted to do it later, there's a tap-in fee like anything else, and I think they were at three grand.
Yeah.
As far as the monthly costs, that's what's the beautiful thing about these plants, they are very, very cheap to run.
Yeah.
When we're talking, well, Eagle will, will tell us, but, but eight man-hours a week?
Right.
Or something like that.
Staffing required.
And, and we're gonna have solar panels for, for a lot of electricity. The money that we get for selling the algae that they convert into ink, and the carbon credits will go against the operating cost of, of the plant.
And, and that's what the baseline carbon study is doing, because if we can establish how much carbon credits that particular plant would generate, we can equate that on the commodities market to how much money is offsetting the cost to the users. Those are the end costs, right, those are the, so if everything went really well, and we, we, we had a really good baseline, it could offset a significant part of the cost of, of your bill, because that would go against your bill, so.
And if so many other plants are similar size, can't we just see what their carbon credits are and assume it's the same?
So.
Instead of spending 6,000 to find out?
I introduced the, I, I personally introduced the idea of the carbon credits to this technology, because I come from a farming background, and I grew up in Emmett. And so my family are, they're looking into doing carbon credits in the farming industry. That's a big part of car, of doing cover crops, less tillage, and there's carbon credits associated with it. So I had a knowledge of carbon credits from that background. And it just so happens the registry and other things are the same for wastewater as they are for agriculture. So like the plant in New York is not, is not benefiting from the car, that's something that they learned about when we went there, and they're, they're very interested to, to try to help their residents.
So there are not the other models to use that, so.
Nobody's taken advantage of that yet, which is, we would be the first.
Okay.
So is, is Clay Township gonna run this thing? Are we gonna run this, Artie, or are we gonna farm it out?
No, we, we'll probably, we'll, we'll end up running it.
Yeah, it would be publicly owned and it would be.
They're, they're.
I don't mean that, I mean, you, you always have to have a caretaker?
Right.
There may be a part-time job for someone on the island.
It's likely, yeah, yeah, you'll have your licensed person who's responsible for the system that has to have that Class D license. But then you'll have people that are maintenance, where, you know, the maintenance people, people that are cutting the grass. Those people will, will be local people.
I think that, I mean, I think the technology's great, and I think it's a great proposal, but kind of to, you know, Mr. Burchard's point of public hearing, I don't know which one should come first, like the study or, you know, what if nobody's that interested in it? Except for the businesses, like is there a minimum kind of, is there any idea of like the minimum number that you would need to be interested to tie in to even make it worth booking? I don't know if you have that data or not.
Well, we, we don't have the answers to those questions yet, that's why we gotta do the engineering.
One of the unique things about why we were attracted to this is because if, for example, the one plant in Indiana that's on the sand, it's on the dunes, Indiana Dunes, it's in Michigan, outside of Michigan City, I've never been there, but I'd like to go. That, that plant, during the wintertime, there's like nobody there. So it's basically just recirculating the algae and there's no users. But then in the summertime, it's packed, right, and people from Chicago going there and whatever, and so then it just ramps up. So it sounds very familiar, right, of what's happening, what happens to the population of Harson's Island. That's really hard to find a good, a good mate for in wastewater treatment. That's really hard to find a good, a good mate for in wastewater treatment. That's a part of the challenge that you're facing with how to do a proper sanitary, is because if it's so low a population, you can't keep the biology going. And then when you get up to a big ramping of, of the, of the population, then it can't handle it, right? So that's why, that's why we're trying to find a, a good fit for the, for the population flux.
I kind of see Suzie's, I kind of see Suzie's point about the, the property though. If we've got all wetlands in downtown San Soucy and Eagle's not allowing, you know, a sewer, a, a septic field, then aren't we gonna have the same problem here? And we're spending money for no reason if we don't have a place we can build it? I mean, that's what she's saying.
Yeah.
So you're not, you're not sharing the exact properties, but are there any of them that are not in the wetlands?
Well, so, so there's regulated and unregulated wetlands. That's how wetlands are, are classified. And so the unregulated wetlands are not subjected to those types of protections, right?
You can mitigate them off.
And you can mitigate them through the wetland bank. So there's, there's, there's ways to address that that are official. Go ahead, Lance.
There is ways to trade property too, correct, Anthony?
Yeah, the wetland bank. Yeah. But it had to be the unregulated stuff. So, so you have plenty of, of, of options. As I said in my narrative, it's, it's like three thousand square feet. So it's, it's not very big, the, the installation. So it's a three thousand, four thousand square foot greenhouse, you know, is, is all you're gonna see there.
We, we basically need a, 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 a lot, a hundred by two hundred feet, right?
Yeah, I mean, you wanna, you wanna be.
We want so we can expand it, but.
Well, yeah, but I think more importantly is also, uh, that it's not just totally maybe immersed in, in a residential area.
No, right.
That maybe it's off on its own kinda, and, um, not in any high, high demand area, area where nobody wants to be.
So Anthony, what's the difficulty in identifying the potential property prior to initiating a fifteen thousand dollar study?
Well, you need, y, y, you could do that. I, I think the big thing about the proposed town hall and, and public hearing, it's gonna be cost. Cost is gonna be a major factor. And we're not gonna be able to intelligently talk to cost if we don't know potentially how much we can offset the cost to the users using the carbon credits or what we would need to be able to do, what options, what, what pools of money are available that would pay for the upfront costs completely free, right? So we would really have, we would be going and I can.
Yes.
I can lecture about how carbon works and carbon credits and algae and, and everything, but it wouldn't really go anywhere because in the end, nobody's gonna want it, everybody's, nobody's gonna buy in if they know, there's no knowledge of the costs associated with it to the end user. I know I wouldn't. I mean, if somebody was saying, hey, you're gonna have this in your house, I'd say, well, what's it gonna cost me? You know, I, I make this much money, you know, I, I can't just give a blank check. So that's a big part of the reason.
I don't know if you're missing my, I don't know if you're missing my point or not.
What's that?
But in order to save fifteen thousand dollars, let's make sure we have some potential property out there that we can attach this to and then do the study on what it is. I know we can't buy it or whatever, but at least identify, there may be nothing out there. And we're gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars on a carbon study?
I, I think there is already, like we said, about five properties that would be fine. And that was without spending any money, just our knowledge.
Well, I'd like to see them. All they hear, we got, we got about five properties. Where are they? And what are they?
Confidential or?
Well, no, we're gonna have to buy.
Yeah.
I know we're gonna have to buy them.
So.
So if you put them on public record, where do you think the price is gonna go?
Yeah, exactly.
But they already called ours wetlands, so if you were looking at Maple Street, that's where we're going through the delineation, you already said it, so whether we offer to sell it or not, it makes sense.
Oh, well, I, I had a, a conversation with Bob and he even suggested take the rest of those lots and turn it into a park.
I agree with that suggestion, but Eagle keeps telling us that we need to do X, Y, and Z. And that's why he's asking the question, that we need to get around Eagle. And that's why we've been talking to senators, that we're trying to take care of it. Because we had a system already designed to hold downtown, for the local community, from, uh, San Jacinto Health Department to make this happen. And then we got to Eagle, because there's this funny situation that San Jacinto gets from Eagle and we're stopped. It's not just us, it's, we have neighbors.
We, we, we know the problem.
So I have some, my question is, which we seem to go on circles, is you've bought the island, we're all familiar with the island.
I don't know, I'm just.
We know where the flags are.
We know where the wetlands are.
So if you have one or three or five.
I mean, there's.
We're just wondering, because he had some four or five properties, but we know one of them now is the one she's talking about, which she knows has already been removed. So which ones are the potential that this could actually work on before we spend the money? I think everybody likes the idea of the potential.
There, there's, there's, there's property down the Elm Street, there's property in the Woods and Poplar, um, you know, maybe we can carve some, uh, some property out that Kevin Wizerk owns. I haven't had that conversation with him yet. Uh, there, there's property behind Taj Moom Marina. I haven't had that conversation yet. There, there's, there's quite a few properties back there.
Is there any way to know if they're wetlands before spending the money?
Well, we, we would. And, and.
And that house, there's a homeowner right now who can't do anything. He took down his trees and he can't build a house because.
I understand that. I, I hear those things every day. That's why we're looking for a solution.
But it's still a lot.
So we, so we do the, we deal with this every day, right? Because I mean, we, we're working from Marine, Marysville all the way to New Baltimore. And so, I mean, we, we work, we, we have a, a, a company that we work with quite regularly called ASTI. They do wetland delineation studies all day long, every day. Um, and so when we come to a site, you know, us and, and my fellow engineers at PCE, we, we've, we've been to hundreds of sites already, both on Harson's Island and outside it, that we've seen it go through that process, right? So we come onto a site and we'll see a specific species or two and we'll say, this is gonna be a problem, right? But it's not over until the professional environmental engineers go through and do their delineation, right? But we already kind of have an idea if it's gonna be successful or not, just because we've seen it so many times, right? And so I don't feel, and, and I don't believe, Artie is feeling that there's gonna be situat, there's just gonna be zero sites that are gonna be able to fit this footprint. We're saying that we, that there, there is potential for that because of its size and because of its innocuous nature, right? It does, it doesn't require a lot of digging in the ground and other things like that, that we can, we can make something work in that area between Taj Moom Marina and La Croix. So, um, but it, it, it requires kind of like the, the potentiality of even being a project by having financing behind it, right? Of some kind, before it can then take shape. So, so that's the, the nature of it.
Listen, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm all for the system. I love it. I think it's, it'd be worthwhile if it comes in place. I just wanna make sure that we don't do a non-fiscal application and throw in money at something like we do all the time.
Right.
All right?
Well, so like, we hear from our state senators that, uh, that the governor intends to spend every dollar that she's got, right? And leave nothing, nothing on the table. Whatever she's got in her budget, she's gonna spend every last dollar. Um, they're of the nature that if it's checking all those boxes for the environment and carbon and all that stuff, then it's gonna, you're gonna see, you're gonna see attention drawn to it. Will that continue? I don't think that's sustainable. I, I don't think they'll be able to sustainably spend billions, billions of dollars every year.
Get it, well, it's getting to that.
Eventually, eventually it's gonna be slim pickings, right?
We, we, we actually have two things to agree on. The first one is the engineering for, for a little over nine thousand for, for this. We need to get that done before we can go forward and, and, and seek funding and, and that type of thing. We could probably wait on the carbon credit until we have a piece of property secured. Am I?
Yeah, I, if you, I think that it would give us the baseline, the, the carbon study, which is what, for example, when I, when we spoke with Peter Stabinow and McLean, they said, what, you know, what, what's this worth to the carbon offset?
Yeah, they, they wanna know.
This is a carbon offset project, right? So how much carbon are you offsetting to make it interesting to us or not? So that's what tells us that. Is that, you know, we're, we have this baseline that we can offset and then they can, they can jump on that.
And we're gonna have a high bar in our ass, because we're asking for a hundred percent funded, one way or another.
Yeah, no match.
And, and all these other projects, you know, they're, they're asking for fifty percent, you know, a third, two, you know, half. But, uh, so we really have to stand out and being the carbon that's sequestered, plus the technology and everything else that we said in, in, in the narrative, I mean, we have to back it up. And, you know, just like the, the Water Main Project, we went ahead and improved the engineering for that so we can go out and get grants. And we got two and a half million dollars for that. So you think we're gonna get this paid for a hundred percent without the engineering done?
Well, it looks like the nine thousand's an invoice, so we kept, probably already hired that out?
Part of it, yeah.
So we're kind of backed into the corner there because we already spent it.
Let, let's do the one, these one at a time.
I'll do the, I'll do the.
If, if I were to choose, obviously.
What? I'll do the.
Okay. Well, what, you wanna make a motion?
If you were to choose what?
If, if I were to choose, I would have you give me the one that gives me the most ammunition to try to get free money for, for the township.
Which is?
Which would be the carbon study.
Which is this carbon credit study?
The carbon, the carbon study. That would give me the biggest ammunition, because it establishes our baseline. And it, people are waiting to hear that from, from this project. The engineering, obviously, you need to go through the town hall, you need to, you need to start figuring out how to engage in that. I mean, obviously, if there's invoices, they'll sit on, they'll sit on the shelf, right? We'll take that risk.
I'll agree with that.
All right.
I will.
That's a risk we take, right, as a company? So that's fine.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the project control carbon credit study of sixty-three hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more discussion? What do you think about all this, John?
Uh, I think, you know, you're really limited on your, on your options on Harson's Island. It's a very unique situation. Um, I think the downtown district is looking for something to take care of their problems and this may be it, hopefully. I don't know that much about it at this point, but I think it's something we should definitely look into.
Any other more discussion?
I just, I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but we received nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of ARPA funds. We've spent a hundred and three thousand of that. Can we agree to use this fifteen thousand dollars out of ARPA funds? Those funds have been invested since we received them, so we're earning interest on those funds. I can't say off the top of my head how much interest we've earned, but it's a few thousand dollars. Is that, I mean, do we wanna use fifteen thousand dollars of ARPA money? That's what that money was for, was infrastructure, things that are visible sort of.
I'll do that first. I'll, I'll amend my motion and then we'll, I'll make a second motion after we vote on this, that, uh, we hire project control to do the carbon credit study of sixty-three fifty and we will utilize our ARPA funds for that study.
Support.
Just for the carbon credit study?
Yeah, then we'll do the next one.
Yeah.
Well, we can have it set on the shelf. He said we could, so we can wait.
We'll talk to that when we're doing carbon credits right now. So I got a motion and support. Any more discussion on that? Are we ready for roll call? Okay, I'm gonna call roll call vote. Christie.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Artie. Yes. Okay, motion pass. Next, we have project control engineering for the San Soucy wastewater treatment plant of nine thousand two, uh, and twenty-five dollars. I, I make a motion that we pay that and utilize ARPA funds for that.
Support.
Okay, we got motion and support. Any more discussion?
I don't know. I've got a lot of, you know, things I'd like to see the ARPA used for, including the fire department and so on. So he said that we could have longer to pay that, so why not just wait? We've got two years to spend the ARPA funds, so no use jumping out to spend it. That's just my opinion.
If the word engineering for San Soucy wastewater treatment was replaced by a study for San Soucy wastewater treatment plant, would it make a difference?
I don't think so.
I mean, we're all up here trying to find solutions, right? There seem to be at an impasse.
Yes.
Right now.
I don't think so.
Both things. Maureen, I have the floor. You can be next, okay? Both things can be true. But we've all identified there's a need, a big need, right? So if they are successful, prior to us completing our studies, we're good, right? They've got it handled. But for some reason, if they're unsuccessful, we've not wasted months and months of time. Both things can be true here. It's fifteen grand. For fifteen grand, I'm willing to give it a shot. That's my opinion. I'm willing to give it a shot, because they need help.
Is it my turn to talk now?
Go ahead.
So, um, I believe that it's already been done, this study or this engineering. We're not gonna need to use it until we go for the money. We're not gonna go for that money until we have this public hearing or town hall or, I mean, paying for that today is not gonna make any difference in the process. So, you know, I say we, you know, we don't need to, yeah, but.
And Anthony even, even supports that.
Yeah. If you think there's a reason that's gonna make a difference, then we do it now, then I'm all for it.
And I don't know, and I don't know if anybody else on this board, but I think fifteen thousand dollars is a lot, a lot of money.
It is.
No matter what.
And normally, the way things tend to work is that we'll come to the board with a proposal. The proposals for X, Y, Z services. You're able to discuss it and then, and then agree, agree or not agree to it, right? So that's why I said that, because I want to be fair and give you the ability to decide on it, not just say, hey, here you go, here's my, my invoice. I mean, to a certain extent, that there's time and material services that we need to do on occasion, right? Especially if there's emergencies or things like that. When it comes to the time that's spent and how that's really labeled, it's, it's really about applications. So, so the time in that nine thousand is related to applications. And one of the major things in an application is to create a project plan. The project plan is exactly the same thing when it comes to the carbon credit industry as it is to, to anything else. It's an estimate of cost that is reasonably accurate. And so the engineering, if you will, is more like an engineer's estimate of cost. Like, when I bring a project to the board, we spend quite a bit of time figuring out what this thing's gonna cost. And obviously, we have to be pretty accurate, too, because if you've watched these projects go through from A to Z, that estimate that we came up with in the beginning needs to be, needs to actually come out in the end. So there's a great amount of time that's spent to make sure that, that we're within the ballpark there, and we're not, you know, saying, hey, it's gonna cost this, and then it's double, right, the cost? And I think we've been pretty good at doing that over the years. And so that's, that's really how the, the label should be assigned to that nine thousand dollar engineering services is, is the, is the engaging in that estimate of cost. And there's more to it, right? Like we said, we haven't even discussed a site or, or how we would assess the, the true cost of that site.
And we appreciate your experience with the carbon credit and that insight, too. That's very helpful, so we appreciate you.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the board, or on the floor, to pay project control engineering nine thousand twenty-five dollars out of ARPA funds.
I have one more thing to say, which I don't know, I would have to email the auditors, but I feel like this is going to carry as an open invoice on our books for our audit anyway. Whether we pay it or not, it will be, it will be a liability in our audit for this fiscal year. So whether we actually pay it or not, I feel like it's a liability on our books right now.
So what's your amendment?
Well, I mean, they've, they've spent eighty-plus hours engineering this potential study, and it's gonna be on our books anyway. I'm just not in favor of leaving the invoice outstanding.
Okay. Anybody have anything else to add before I call roll call?
If it hasn't, if they change the due date, that it's not due upon receipt, will that still be a liability?
Well, there's a difference between whether the service has been rendered prior to June thirtieth, or if we're still, like, we could order cars. If the cars are on order and we haven't received them, like, let's say, police cars, if we haven't received them by the end of the fiscal year, then they're not a liability. But if we receive them prior to the fiscal year, even if they say, well, we won't invoice you till July, they're still on our books for this year.
Well, this is only May first. We've got till June thirtieth. Aren't we gonna be doing most of these things before then and had decided the mid-June meeting to pay this? And then it wouldn't be a liability at that point, right?
We could definitely table it and come back to it in June, as long as we come back to it, because I don't see the point of having it as a liability without paying it.
Well, I think we'll be getting the other things handled before then, so I'm, I'm all for that.
Anthony, how much of this work is completed?
I'm not, I mean, this is from, from our, our office, right? So I'm assuming that it would, if it's services rendered, it's all completed.
It says forty-seven hours of engineering assistant, six hours of project engineer, and twenty-eight hours of a two-man survey crew.
Okay, so yeah, all, all rendered services.
And it talks about preliminary site layout and everything, so they, site selection alternatives, they looked at, plant process design and sizing. I mean, they've already looked at spots. I guess.
Sizing is more for costs, but yeah.
The site layout, they must have looked at some sites, too.
I think they meant the collection system site, yeah.
Oh.
Yep.
So we have a motion. I mean, if it fails, then we can vote to table whatever the, the board wishes. Have a motion to pay the invoice out of ARPA funds. Are we ready to call a, a vote?
I'm gonna support that motion.
What's that?
I'm gonna support that motion.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call roll call. Chris?
Yes.
John?
No.
Uh, Maureen?
No.
Okay, Mark?
No.
Okay. Artie, uh, well, I can go either way on, uh, yes, Christie?
Yes.
Three, three.
Actually, it doesn't, it doesn't pass.
It's gotta be majority, right?
Yep, it doesn't pass.
Not passed.
I'll entertain a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it till June.
Till June?
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Okay, we have a motion to support, to table the, paying the nine thousand twenty-five dollars to project control till June.
Who supported that?
I did.
Mark?
Okay, any discussion? There ain't none. John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Christie?
Yes.
Chris?
Nope.
Okay.
It's the second June meeting, right?
Motion passes. All right. Got through that.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I'm, normally, we don't do the discussion like that, but I thought it was good for this meeting with the, the public, so. All right, we gotta set a public hearing for Drinking Water State Revolving Fund project for May fifteenth at six o'clock. Basically, the same thing what we did here, but for the drinking water, that's the, the water main project.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund project for May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six P M.
Support.
Okay, there's motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, and this came out of our, our budget workshop to, for me to get quotes for a consultant for our fire department.
We didn't really talk about the quotes in the budget workshop, so maybe you can explain to me what that means.
Well, well, we talked about having someone from the outside take a look at it at, 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 at the operation, see if they have any ideas.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve obtaining quotes for consultation for the fire department.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Is this something that other fire departments do? Does the chief know anything about anything like that, or?
Well, I haven't had, even had a chance to talk to him, but he'll, he'll be reviewing the quotes with us.
Okay. Well, there's no cost to getting a quote, so it's awesome. You need an answer, so.
Okay, we got motion and support. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have board member comments. Who wants to start? Chris?
Yeah, congratulations to our new firefighters. I'm really happy that they have their certs, firefighters one, two, and EMT. That's pretty strong group there. Should be a real service to our community. And thank you to the public who attended our meeting this evening. It's always certainly more engaging when people attend, so thank you for coming.
Um, so back in October, I took a sewing class, and since that happened, I just, no, no. I just recently saw an advertisement for something that happened last Friday at the Elginak Lions, which was called the Care Bag Movement.
Yes.
So I don't know if anybody has heard about that, but
Great.
The Care Bag Movement, uh, there's a group at the high school of high school kids, and they do community service, and they form this Care Bag Movement, which teams up with local, local and non-local sewers. I'm trying to remember what other state somebody's, somebody's family member came from to participate. But anyway, they provide, the Care Bag Movement provides bags. So I think they were making pillowcases, care bags, cosmetic bags, flannel baby blankets, and quilts for children who are in the D H H S foster care. So there was a person that spoke from DHS, and she said that the Care Bag Movement has been in existence for ten years. She said that children would come with all of their belongings in a garbage bag when they were taken from their homes. And since this Care Bag Movement started, those kids bring their stuff to foster care in a bag with dignity. So I didn't realize how it was gonna touch me, but it did. They partner up also with Kids in Distress in St. Clair, and they service ten thousand children two times a year in St. Clair, from St. Clair and Santa Lat counties that are in foster care when they come in the dead of winter in shorts and flip flops, and their foster parents don't have any clothes. So I just think it's really important, if you have time, if you sew, if you can collect clothing or anything like that, it's a really worthy local cause that I feel, I'm sorry, I just feel really strongly about it. For ten years, I was oblivious, and I'm sad about that.
Mr. Sass started that.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
No, that's, that's great.
Mr. Sass, he was a junior in high school, I believe, started that program, and basically with the piece-to-piece quilters.
There were so many
Yeah.
local groups. You know, the venue was donated, breakfast and lunch were donated. There were so many vendors that came in. It was kind of like being in one of those dance, dance events where you're like dancing and you're getting tired, and then somebody would come over the loudspeaker with a microphone and say, and ring the bell and say, we just got donations. This is how many blankets we have done. It just was really, it touched my heart. It was so encouraging to see, you know.
Control chaos. I've been to that before.
Would you think of coming to like a HIXPA meeting and talking to the islanders?
You want me to talk again?
No, I know of so many women that sew and sew really, almost professionally, so.
So I actually sat next to a woman that lives on the same street as me, and she's like their number one. She makes pillowcases all year long, and they made something like, I think it was close to five hundred pillowcases, and they said a lot of it was, you know, her, just diligently making pillowcases, you know. We were kind of chatting, and she did not chat. She just sewed all day, and it just was really touching. But yes, I would come. If you want me to do this again, I would do it.
Thank you.
I'll try.
Yeah, that's a tough act to follow.
That's awesome, though, Christie.
It is.
Um, I just wanna say welcome to Dave, Nick, and Les. Congratulations. And I just wanted to mention that our Elginak varsity baseball team is ranked number one in the state of Michigan right now. I don't know as if that's ever happened. So get out there and enjoy some of the success and support the Musketeers.
Wednesday's their next game?
I believe so.
I think it's Wednesday. They got a doubleheader at four and six.
It's a tremendous team this year.
Yep.
Girl softball is.
Girl softball's ranked number three in the state.
Yeah.
Not to leave them out, thank you.
They're awesome, too.
Yeah. Maureen?
Uh, well, before our next meeting, it looks like we got a big weekend. May thirteenth, we've got the Clay Days. There'll be a Flats, Harson's Island, St. Clair Flats Association meeting that day at the Lions Hall, a Harson's Island Transportation Authority meeting that day on Saturday, and then Sunday is Mother's Day, so Happy Mother's Day to, to everyone. That's a mom. And I know it's been a long meeting, and I hate to have to lengthen it, but as Artie said, we are in budget workshop right now. It's not something that we tape so that everybody can see where all the money's being spent. Maybe we should, you know, consider doing that, because it's such an important time. And I, I wanna say thank you to Chief for finding three such fine candidates and, you know, recruiting them for us, and Donna, in her letter, her, there was another concern about, you know, what's going on with our, with our things, you know, going on. And she spoke of the lack of fire and EMS services on the island. I'm fighting extremely hard for a six-man full-time fire department for all of Clay Township. I think, you know, this is why Artie is gonna get, obtain quotes to get help, because I've really been kind, you know, having a temper tantrum, basically, with, with the board. They've been very patient with me. We're in budget workshops. They have to be addressed and solved by June thirtieth if we're gonna make it happen. According to, I just wanna share some information that I learned from fire chief and going through this. George has told us this is what's needed. It'll solve many of our problems. Currently, Chief Rose has twenty-eight part-time employees with a budget of only one point two million, and our police department has nineteen employees with three point five million dollar budget. The fire has the lowest millage, the lowest paid employees. Our fire chief's the lowest paid department head. He has a very difficult time scheduling. I don't want these three to hear this, but the part-time employees pretty much tell him when they're available, and he has to work with it. He even fills in himself when he can't get someone for a time slot. I don't believe any other department in our township has to spend weeks making phone calls and begging people to work. He wants to get good people. He wants to keep them. This is what a six-man full-time fire department working alongside with some part-time employees will accomplish. I believe that all of Clay Township will have better service with firefighters who are familiar with our area and have better credentials and skills. In, in my opinion, this is gonna save lives, it's gonna save properties that are, you know, on fire. We have, you know, pay for two fire department buildings. We have two brand-new fire trucks. But what good are they if they, there aren't firefighters always there to use them? And here I am speaking primarily about Harson's Island that isn't manned all the time, but partially. As Christie's mentioned, we have ARPA funds that can be used. There is a SAFER grant that we qualify for, five-four. That's what the senators have told me. But the board is concerned it won't be sustainable. I understand these concerns, but I believe we can gradually adjust the budget and find the money to sustain it. At the very worst, we go back to what we have now. But in the meantime, we're gonna probably save some lives and some property. Artie is explaining that the nine hundred thousand or one, maybe it's under nine hundred now that's left in the ARPA funds, he wants to use it for our, our fire safety building, which would be a combination of the fire and police department. It's gotta be spent over the next two years, but I believe what's better than improving the safety of our community? At the March twentieth board meeting, a resolution was gonna be presented to support St. Clair County in their efforts to use their, their thirty-one million for the twenty-six mile corridor improvement project. I don't know if it's possible, but maybe we should be asking the county to send some of those funds to Clay to help us with our building or our fire department. During the first budget workshop, I mentioned, then, I mentioned renegotiations on our contracts with police and fire. I was told the negotiations were finished, but I see, I know they're not. I learned that they were not. At the second budget workshop, I pointed out the ten percent raise that all employees have received over the last three years, and the fact that no employee pays over six percent portion of their health insurance. These are just some things I want the public to know, cuz they don't really see our numbers. In my opinion, that's not the normal, normal wage for working people in corporations, and and we, maybe we should look at making some changes, but that's up to the public. As you can imagine, all of these talks have made me very unpopular. In addition, I talked about this combined stipends of over a hundred thousand dollars that the township supervisor, clerk, and treasurer receive with no accountability that I've been able to find or reporting as to what these stipends are being used for. It just seems that when we need to find the money for many things, it's available. We found a way to hire a full-time court enforcer. We gave our township assessor a good raise with her new contract. That was well-deserved. We're finding the funds to create our new municipality utility authority. That's the wastewater treatment plant, because St. Clair County canceled their contract with us early. And Artie has told me he's been working on a plan that would give coverage for the island pretty much twenty-four seven. It involves hiring only one more full-time person and a pay raise for the current firefighters. It wouldn't involve a millage increase, which we're concerned about at first, and maybe a small bump in it. But he can't share these details for a few weeks. He thinks it's a good option for the board to consider, and it's certainly better than what we have now. But I don't think it's the best option for all the citizens of Clay, not looking just for Harson's Island. I'm not clear as to why it's not shareable with myself or the members of the board yet, but, you know, we wanna work together. I've offered to gather information from Fort Grashit Fire Department, who recently transitions to a full-time firefighter, felt it was extremely beneficial. Artie explained that wouldn't be helpful, because our situation's much different. Two fire halls, state land that has to be covered. We were gonna have a meeting with Chief Rose between the budget workshops. One of my questions, why it didn't happen, Artie emailed to me, I didn't know I had to report directly to you, but then you never call, email, or stop in either, which I am guilty of that. If you, and if I would have done so, I'd know that. He's been working nonstop, twelve to fifteen hours a day since he got back. So he is working really hard on things. I appreciate all of his hard work, and I do believe that he does report, however, directly to every member of the board. And it would be great if he could share his plans on what he has, he's working on it. That way, if we can assist in any way, that's what we're here for. Hopefully, we can find a way to put a budget together, addressing the safety concerns of the citizens. If anyone wants to contact us with any concerns, ideas, solutions, please feel free to email or call. All of our contact information is on the claytownship.org website, okay? So, sorry for so long, but. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mark? Thank you, Maureen. My comments tonight were not meant to impede any progress here in the township. On the other hand, I'm all for progress. However, as a trustee and as an elected official, the trustees are responsible for fiduciary.
Fiduciary.
Fiduciary responsibilities, and that's what this is. Everything is fiduciary.
Right.
So that's all, that's all I'm concerned about. I get tired of throwing money at things here, there, for study, this and this, and nothing materializes, for the most part. Although we do have some good things going on. So, congratulations to the firefighters.
See, where do I start? I don't know. Also, May thirteenth is a busy day. It's the St. John's Marsh cleanup at the same, or in the morning from eight to ten, I believe it is. Let's see. Bathrooms, this, that, this, that. You know, Maureen, I'm, I'm not even gonna begin to to talk about the stipends that you're, you're suggesting you wanna take away from Chrissy and, and myself and Cindy, the clerk.
That's not accurate. I said, well, you need to adjust the salary, increase the salary and remove the stipends, because I don't believe that's, you know.
The stipends gives the board more control. How the state law works, the salary is, once you're elected. How the state law works, the salary is, once you're elected into a four-year term or a two-year term, the salary cannot be adjusted lower. So you cannot, nobody on this board can adjust salaries lower. The stipend, on the other hand, for additional duties can be adjusted by the board. So it makes us, the treasurer, the clerk, and myself more accountable to the board because you could say, Artie, you're not doing your job, we're taking that stipend away from you. That's what the whole idea is behind the stipends. And when we first put that in place, the Times-Herald wrote an article commending us on it. MTA was all about it. In fact, now they, they support that. That is, the stipends gives you, the trustees, the whole board, more control over how we are paid. Do you understand that?
I understand your point there and to me, it's also questionable because it, you're saying it gives the board more control, but it also, I believe, can control the voting because if they are not voting the way that needs to be voted on, they may not receive their stipend. I know that that's a whole board thing, but I still think that there's, to control the votes at the board meetings by stipends, I think that can happen.
I don't, I don't know how that happens. I don't, but that's just my answer for that. And, and for us, and just to let everybody know, everyone says, yeah, we want free, we want more services. That's all fine and dandy, but for us to do, in fact, I, I reworked the numbers, for us to, to hire the six people, it's going to take probably at least one, maybe one and a quarter mil increase on your taxes to, to pay for it. So I think the board was very reluctant and, and speak for, other than Maureen, to do that. And we, we had some discussion of putting a vote to the people, but we can't do that for a year and a half, so we're, I'm working on some type of a stopgap between now and then, which will be part of hiring a consultant to, to tell us our options and everything else. That's fiduciary responsibility.
At the first budget workshop, you had two proposals for the fire department.
This isn't debate, this is my comments. And yes, I did. And you know what?
And it wasn't a one point two-five million difference at that time.
I said I had to look at the numbers harder also, and I did. I've talked to other departments. I talked to M A F F. I talked to others. I had to adjust those numbers up for it to work. And I, I will show those to you. If you want to come to my office tomorrow, gladly to go over.
I can't be there, but I'll be there this week.
Just to be clear, he's talking about the millage, one point two-five mils, not million.
Right, mils. So, and, and to my point earlier too, and, and this is disadvantage for Clay Township. We have to fund two fire stations where most townships our size has one. And fifty-three percent of the, the property in Clay Township is owned by the state of Michigan. They pay zero money to public safety. So essentially, we have double the cost and we have less revenue come in because half of our, the property, who we still have to, to protect, we don't get revenues from. So that, you know, it's a significant challenge and we're trying to work through it. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All right. Thanks for coming, everybody.